Boards and committees in mind. So I don't know if you're going to have a quorum and you're going to call your committee to order, but if you do, and if you do, understand that that's already been covered. And maybe. I mean, it is just a little after 6:30, but maybe can we start bringing people in? And maybe Ms. Luttrell first, and maybe she has a sense of how many members of the planning board might be planning to participate tonight. I think, Mimi, you may be with us. If you are, if you heard my question, I'm still going to repeat it. And do you have a sense for the number of members of your board who are likely to be participating in the Zoom meeting tonight? And if you don't, that's fine, but I'm just curious.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay, thanks. I think, Vanessa, it's fine to bring. Why don't we bring members of the EDC over?
Okay.
And Vanessa, let me ask you, how many can we, how many people can we have as participants without it overwhelming the system?
I don't know that I have never heard Mr. Laflamme talk about a cap, so I can check, write to him right now and check with him. Let me just bring a few more over.
I feel like the guy in Jaws, I should have gotten a bigger boat. Pictures are getting smaller and smaller.
Did you want Ms. Munsef to participate? Or do you want to just bring her over if she needs to speak at any point?
Why don't we, we've got committee members at this point, correct?
Oh, thank you.
All right, why don't we go with that? And obviously others can hear. And anyone, whether on a committee, not on a committee or otherwise, will have the opportunity to have their say. And just let me, thank you, everybody, first of all, for making yourselves available. And for those who have already submitted some written comments, thank for, thank you for those. The way I view it, and I think the way Ms. Brosio and I, Ms. Brosio obviously has been, you know, very much a driving force on behalf of the Board of Selectment, our representative in dealing with the zoning consultants and with the EDC and the planning board on this. But the way we see tonight, and obviously not with real strictures on it, but the way we see tonight is an opportunity to supplement, if people choose to, some written comments that have already been made, or if they have not made written comments, to weigh in for the first time in this forum. The proposed zoning article has been posted and circulated for the downtown area. It's a mixed-use zoning article. The intention is to propose, consider what I will call improvements, or at least potential improvements, to the current zoning in the downtown area. And the process we've been following is, there's a consultant who's expert in the ways and wherefores of zoning in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has put together a proposal based on her experience with communities that have, hopefully mostly similarities with the town of Southborough, and particularly with our downtown area. But obviously, we sat down a couple of weeks ago with members of the planning board, with members and representatives of the EDC, with CHOPSY, and at that time said, in addition to revisiting with those boards and committees, that we'd give the community at large, as well as any other boards and committees, the opportunity first in writing, and then in this open forum. And obviously, it'll be ample opportunity in addition, additional public meetings down the line, but to weigh in. Again, the object here is to put together as sound and as beneficial a potential zoning article as we can to do magic, if we can, with the, with Southborough's downtown area. And with that, I am going to look for, you know, I guess I'll start with Ms. Luttrell. You're the member of the zoning board. You submitted some pretty helpful, extensive written comments. On the one hand, I think they very much speak for themselves, but whether or not you have anything additional that you'd like to add, I'm going to go around to the, to the committee members that are here before I open up a little broader. Fair enough?
Sure. My only concern is that when I was thinking about in following the EDC through the downtown initiative and went to their forums of the representation that we were looking for, you know, a small, walkable, village-style downtown, and some of the, like, the building height and first-floor ceiling heights and seemed to me to be pushing more for a, like, a bigger, more urban-style downtown. There's not a lot of green space that's required. I don't know where we are with sidewalks. A year ago, the DBW was waiting for permission from CSX. I don't know if they ever heard from them, but, you know, to have a walkable downtown, you definitely need sidewalks. So that was my only concern. I've looked at other towns that I like, they're downtown, and they have a 30-foot, 35-foot building height max, and where 40 and special permit for 45, which is not allowed anywhere else in town, even on Route 9. So I don't know how that is a small, walkable, village-style downtown, if you're looking for four-story buildings and apartments. So that's my basic comment.
Okay. And just, I probably should have, Ms. Barrett, who's been, who's been doing the zoning drafting and has been very helpful from a consulting standpoint, is not here tonight. The plan is to incorporate all of the written comments, as well as any additional comments that we get in the forum tonight, and have her come back at a future meeting with reactions, responses, maybe edits or changes based on what she's seen in writing and hears as part of the forum. So, Mimi, thanks very much. I don't see anybody else from the planning board, so I'm going to shift to Mr. Wood and see if you and/or members of your, of the EDC, again, a number of people submitted written items, whether or not there are any additional comments to supplement those written materials that you'd like to weigh in with tonight.
I'm not sure. I just looked at the document today, I apologize, briefly. Julie, do you have any comments towards, I know you had met and talked with Lisa and Judy this week, and Claire, so I'm just curious to where you guys are.
Yeah, sure. So I appreciate all the feedback that we got, got most of it, not all of them, unfortunately. And there's some good comments, and a lot of them overlap with each other. You know, I think we're starting to, if you read through everything, you're starting to see, you know, the places where we might agree versus the ones where, you know, there's definitely some room for discussion. I think that, you know, it's unfortunate Judy wasn't able to join us tonight. I think she has a really great perspective, and I think that, you know, would benefit all of us to understand, in some instances, why she proposed things the way she did, so that we can talk about it. But, you know, she's done a lot of this, and, Mimi, I totally, you know, hear what you're saying, in that you're looking at other towns, and we should, you know, think about what we want to look like and make it on par with that. So I'm curious too, as to why Judy, you know, proposed certain things versus others. And I think she'd be a great person to speak to that. So, but like I said, I think there's a lot of good stuff here. And one, one comment I just want to make, because it seemed to come up a fair amount, was that there are a lot of details, you know, about, that there are important details. And I know Mimi mentioned, you know, and the EDC's been talking about this from the beginning, that the whole part of what we wanted to do was not just build big buildings, but we wanted to have a community environment that was walkable, that had open space, that had benches, that had a place to park your bike. And, and there's not, that wasn't, there wasn't a lot of specific detail about this other than that that this was part of that grand vision. I think, and I would want to verify this with Judy, that those are not necessarily the things, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't want to misspeak, but those may not be the things that go into this document. I think we can have some broad guidelines of it, and maybe there is some sort of ratio of, you know, green space to other, other sorts of space. But a lot of the comments that I've been seeing, I think, are probably, and from everything from facade to, you know, other things, will be more appropriate in a separate design guideline document. And why I think that that might work better is because, obviously, we know how difficult it is to change a zoning bylaw. You know, we've been trying to do it in our town for, I don't even know how many decades, but I'm hoping we can be successful here. But designs might change, so, you know, change, having a committee or a view committee, whether it's the planning board or whether it's a separate committee made up of different people who can come together and put together design guidelines, that can be changed more easily than having to go, you know, in front of town meeting and go through this whole process with, you know, still the oversight that we're looking for, but the facade that we might now, you know, styles change. Nobody was talking about mixed use 10 years ago in the same way that they are now, and that's sort of the problem that we run into here. So I think that, you know, in thinking about what our comments are, maybe breaking it up between things that are the true zoning piece of it versus things that are style guidelines. That's, that's all I have for now.
Okay, John, anyone from, anyone else from EDC who, again, either submitted written and wants to supplement or add in? Did I lose Mr. Wood? No, there. Anyone else, John?
Can I just say one more thing? Marty, I don't know if anybody from, I know John's on CHOPSY, but I don't know if anyone from CHOPSY also wanted to weigh in. I'm looking at their comments too, and I think, I know me personally, and I think a lot of us have a lot to learn on how that's a piece that could be implemented. So I don't know if tonight's a great forum, but I would love to hear from CHOPSY and have, you know, ways that they think we can help incorporate affordable housing into this in a way, also recognizing it's a very small amount of space that we have to work with.
I guess, maybe three things on that. Number one, there were some written comments from members of CHOPSY. That's number one. Number two, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt the order I was going in. Lisa, do you want to weigh in on specifically the, any input that has been gotten from CHOPSY? And then, obviously, we've got a CHOPSY member, Ms. Malinowski, on the Board of Selectment, and maybe you can give any insight. As I said, I took a look, and there was some, some CHOPSY input. They participated last time and were helpful in providing stuff. But Lisa, any comments?
You know what? Chelsea is the member of CHOPSY, and they discussed this. I would defer to her as far as CHOPSY.
Okay, fair enough. Chelsea?
Sure. So we did talk about this at our last meeting, and I think at that time, we did not have the draft in front of us, but the general consensus was that CHOPSY was concerned that if we wanted to do something related to affordable housing, that the language in the, in the first draft that they looked at did not really accommodate a lot of affordable housing, because you got to have a minimum of eight units. And I believe when EDC met a few weeks ago, they changed that down to four. And CHOPSY has not met since kind of that change was made. But one of my comments that I put into the document or into the feedback was that if we're going to address any affordability component here, I think we need to make it 25% or a minimum of one unit, because if, if you're going to have, if we're talking about smaller scale, like Mimi said, and you, you're not going to have a building probably with eight units, or maybe even a four. So if you want to address affordability, I think we need to make it a little bit more achievable, rather than just putting a 25% of minimum of four. So that was my personal comment. Chelsea did discuss that. Like I said, we're meeting on Friday. John, I don't know if you have any else, anything else to add from a CHOPSY perspective?
I do, actually. We actually changed it as EDC, in the EDC, and ours, we had changed it to 25% as well, because we thought that was too small. We also dropped it down to four housing, four units of housing. We also had changed it under, it was an idea of Sam, Mr. Stivers, to change it to by-ownership or other, so it could be considered rental property as well. So if one of them, one of them is an apartment, all four units go toward, count towards our census for the 40B, which I thought was pretty sharp. So we agree with you on the, on the, on the boost in the 25%. And going down to, we went down to four, we thought eight was a little bit high, especially where we don't have any big pieces of land or big buildings, that any large-scale developments can go in, let alone, this is going to be very small-scale down there if it goes through.
Yeah, I saw one proposed, I think it was from Jesse Stein, said something like 12.5%, but at least one unit, if there's four more units. So if there's four, at least one would have to have it. And then anything larger than that, 25, would be 12.5%. And yeah, I think a lot of these are, you know, I think everyone's on the same page as that, so, so I think that's great.
Yeah, I think, and Dorianne and, I can't remember the gentleman's name from CHOPSY who spoke last time, made a pretty compelling case for, and the case is compelling, that whatever zoning changes we make, whether in the downtown area or otherwise, that we're very mindful of the affordable housing element. And so I think that the comments I saw along those lines were, you know, designed to do exactly what you just described, which is to make sure that we don't have an affordable housing component on paper only, but it's one that makes sense and fits into the, what we're trying to accomplish elsewhere with zoning, which is the more modestly sized buildings and the like. Okay. And Mr. Shea and Mr. Stivers, I haven't forgotten about you, but I'm going to give other folks, non-members of the Board of Selectment, an opportunity to, to speak first. And before I go, we've just sort of broken it up this way to, and bring in some other of the participants. I'll just, either Mr. Moorhead or Ms. Duca, do you have either any supplement to written comments you might have submitted or comments tonight about the proposed zoning? I'll go to you first, Mr. Moorhead.
I do not. We worked through this document all together a couple of weeks ago, and we tweaked a lot of these things, and we were all pretty much on the same board. I mean, we're all trying to do the same thing. I think we're all trying to get to the same resolution and see something built. So I don't have any comments. I think Julie's said it well, and John's taken us to, in a good, in a good direction, so I'm good.
All right, terrific. Suzanne, same thing. You seem to be nodding when Mr. Moorhead was speaking.
Yep, I'd say the same thing. I think we, you know, we worked through this at length in our last meeting, and I think we were all kind of on the same page, and that was sort of our goal, was to come out with one conclusive plan. So I think I'm good.
Okay. And before I go to, to folks who are in the participant area right now.
Rob Anderson from EDC is still here as well.
That's who, that's who I was going to next. Thanks, John.
Sorry.
Yeah. I think Michael and Suzanne and John and Julie have hit on everything. The little bit of flexibility that the zoning will allow will hopefully get some new investment in the downtown, which will hopefully spur the economic development that we want. So I think it's a good change.
Okay.
I had one thing that I forgot to bring up that I found in another part, that Mr. Stivers and Ms. Hollahan had said in regards to the trailers, removing the language to remove a mobile home or travel trailer entirely. My only question is, what if somebody had a fire downtown and they needed a mobile home or temporary housing or, or something like that? And that was under restrict, no, to special uses by the Zoning Board of Appeals, it was Section E, Part 3, a mobile home or travel trailer uses a dwelling or business quarters for more than 30 days in a year. One of them said I'd be in favor of removing this language on the mobile home or travel trailer entirely, and the other one said remove no trailers. But I was just saying, what if there was a fire and somebody needed temporary housing with that? Would we be able to have that still under a special permit? Would that not fall under that? I just want to make sure that this language, if we change it and it allows for, if somebody, God forbid, has a fire and they need temporary housing, that a mobile home can come into their property until they get back in and restore.
John, I think that's a fair point, and I think that's, that is, that is not currently in the, in the written comments. I know there was language in there about mobile homes, but the point you just raised, I don't think was in there.
There was. There was a written comment by, by somebody from the planning as well, it was Mr. Stivers, to take that writing out, and I just want to have my opinion that I don't think we should.
Okay, fair enough.
Maybe, maybe, you know, change it around a little bit, so it's, it's emergency shelter or something, but I don't think it should be removed completely, just in case.
Okay. Of the current panelists, I think I've exhausted. Oh, I think, did you just bring Ms. Houlihan over?
Yes, I did.
Vanessa? Okay. Hi, Marty, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. And just to let you know where we are, you may or may not have been listening, but we are, and I know you were one of the people who submitted some written comments. And so this is an opportunity, if, whether you submitted written comments or not, to, if you did, to supplement them, obviously, no obligation to, with any comments as part of this forum. And we've had input so far tonight from members of the planning board and EDC, and we're about to go into our additional participant panel that we've got waiting, but brought you over as a member of the planning board to see if you have anything in addition to the written materials you submitted to, to add as part of the forum.
Thanks. So I did just want to extend to John's comment about, it's in, it's on page six of 14, so it's in this, I don't know what section it is, but there's a comment around Section E3, a mobile home or travel trailer used as a dwelling. So I'm fine if there's an emergency use of it, but I think it's the, we don't really want it as a permanent staple.
Exactly. But if we could just change the language to make sure that there can be exceptions.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think, and then there was an, and I just, I needed clarity on, and I had asked for clarity on trying to understand the, the .35 or under, there is, there is language, and, and, you know, even as a planning board member, maybe I should know this, but Section B1748.4.1B, I did not fully understand the up-to-maximum floor of .35. And I didn't know if anyone could actually explain that to me.
Well, I know I can't.
Well, Marty, if I may.
Okay, Lisa, sure.
I think that, you know, I, I, some, I had a couple of people reach out to me that had comments, but hadn't gone, had the opportunity to go through the matrix that we have, because it came out so late. And I know that, unfortunately, Judy couldn't be here to answer some more of these technical questions. In conversations with her today, she's actually made herself available on a couple of different dates that I think would be very beneficial to have a robust actual discussion on what's been presented and her comments on what has been presented and being able to answer these questions. Marty, I would hate to give a stab or to have anybody give a stab when Judy wrote this, and there were specific reasons why she put it in that way. So while everybody's here, I mean, maybe this is a great opportunity to kind of get feedback from everybody on two of the dates that Judy has given us. She is available November 24th, which is two weeks from tonight. I know it's the week of Thanksgiving. I don't know what people's plans are, or either December 1st at 8:00 PM. She has a meeting before that, but she's willing to come on afterwards. She had provided some initial comments that we didn't share, because we were hoping to get something more substantive from her prior to the meeting that we could share with everybody. So I just don't want to go too down, too far down a path without having her be here to be able to, you know, to give her reasonings, why she drafted, and to be able to really, Marty, give you the answer that I think you're looking for. I think most of us could give a stab. There's probably some that have the answer, but I, I think it's very beneficial in having Judy be the person that, that, you know, answers these questions between the different boards. So again, I probably jumped in, but if we could consider dates, even Marty, while we still have EDC and members of the planning board and members of the Board of Selectment here, it might be beneficial to plan a joint meeting, again, a robust meeting, that we can actually get down into the, to the grid that you have, and if there's any other comments that come in, can be added to the grid prior to the meeting.
I think that makes a lot of sense. The, I guess the only question is, I mean, we, we've got a meeting on December 1st. This is, this is an important enough issue that, that we can move things around and accomplish an 8 o'clock start. This is, this is a strange year. Normally, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving would be completely out of bounds, but I don't know. Maybe, maybe, you know, everybody's just going to be taking walks on, you know, the Beals' property in Hoppington State Park, the week of the 23rd through the 27th, so.
And I think too, Marty, if I can, you know, I don't think we want to get too far down the road. We have momentum as we're moving forward, you know. Boards and committees have commented. Maybe if we open it up for another week of comments, in case there's somebody that didn't have an opportunity to meet, you know, we can have it added, and then we can have the discussion I think we were all hoping to have tonight.
So let me ask, I mean, I've, I've got a number of people who I, I don't need to hear your voice, but who is, who would not be available for a meeting on November 24th, which is the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week? Wow, that's, 2020 is a different year, isn't it?
Right.
Wow, wow. So, so that's what would be, now, who would prefer that it not be the 24th and be the 1st instead?
At 8 o'clock.
Would have to be, I think, I think the 24th sounds like a date that might work. And, you know, from, I think from a lot of people's perspective, the sooner, the sooner the better. And Marty, questions like that, again, it is unfortunate that Ms. Barrett was not able to join us tonight, but rather than not convene and give folks the opportunity to weigh in, we decided to charge ahead anyway. So thanks for that. Anything else? As I said, I know you submitted an awful lot of stuff in, in writing. If there's not anything else you want to add tonight, I'm going to shift now to some folks who haven't had a chance to weigh in yet.
Do we know when?
Hold on a second, John.
Sure.
Marty, are you all set?
I'm good, but I do see that Don Morris has joined us, so I don't know if Don has anything to say from the planning board.
Okay. While, while we're pulling Mr. Morris over, what were you going to say, John?
Do we know an anticipated date when Ms. Barrett may be able to go through all these comments and give us a document? Because a lot of the questions or comments were very similar in nature, and maybe she'd be able to answer and give us a more revised document, that if we're going to be extending the, the time for people to make comments on, it would be nice to have a streamlined version of this to get, to get all the common ones out and have some of her questions answered. I'm assuming that she's probably got this document already and all this, the matrix last week, so I'm assuming that she was planning on getting that to us within a week or so, so we could have more debate on it, more questions. So is that a probability? Is that not going to happen? Do we know?
I don't think there's a firm date yet, but Lisa, Julie, you can correct me. That doesn't mean we can't give a firm date that gives ample time for people to absorb it before we sit down again on the 24th.
And I think too, John, there was a lot of, and a little bit of feedback that we did get from her today, there was a lot of, that were things that were policy decisions that I think before she There was a lot of that were things that were policy decisions that I think before she truly puts it into a document and maybe and and maybe Julie, you think differently. I think she wanted to take these comments. I think she wanted to answer some of the questions and get questions herself. Answer questions herself, you know. Again, there was a lot of policy decisions that had to be made before she could actually create the final document. I think that was one of the reasons why I think our meeting will be very robust on the twenty fourth.
I'm not even I don't even mean like a final document. I just mean a document that a lot of these, we had the same questions like I saw, like Mr. Stein was asking about twenty five percent of what and and myself as well for twenty five percent for for the housing aspect. I just think there's some redundancies that would be nice to see scaled down and have her if she has any questions that she can answer before we have the robust, you know, before that time, everybody can go, oh, that's already been answered. It might save a bunch of time than everybody wondering the same thing, if possible.
No, I I think she's doing that. She was hoping to have something for us tonight. But again, the the lateness and and getting the matrix and everything. I would imagine, and again, we can certainly have a conversation with her, but I I imagine we'll we'll get something this week because she did answer some of the questions and I didn't want to share the feed, the initial feedback she gave because we were expecting or hoping, I shouldn't say we're expecting. We were hoping to have something in additional to share with everybody tonight and and we didn't. So I think. Okay.
And I I before before I point to you, Mr. Morris, just John, I think there's going to be a little bit of clunkiness because we're trying to push hard on a timeline. And we're trying to push hard to get comments by a certain date, and then we're pushing hard to get a revision based on those comments. And I but I'd rather do that rather than build in too much lag time because on the one hand, you know, it's at best fifty fifty, I think, that we actually have our town meeting in March, but we've got to keep that date in mind. So with that, Mr. Morris, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for being so late. I lost track of the time. This is wonderful momentum. And yes, I I plan to be available on the twenty fourth.
Anything you want to weigh in on, Don? A ton of people, a ton of members of your committee have 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 weighed in with written comments and some comments here tonight. Obviously, no obligation to, and you can hold your hold your powder until the twenty fourth.
Well, I I hope to submit my comments before then. I apologize again for not submitting them on time. But I've just been losing track of time. I wasn't even aware that yesterday was Monday until the Patriots came on, so. And it's it's great to see everyone. So much horsepower with this. It's going well. And I agree with you, Marty, that I think on the twenty fourth, we'll we'll have a, you know, a good collection, especially if Judy's able to to join us.
Okay, great. Thanks, Don.
And thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right, I now am going to, Ms. Hale, point to you, and we've got you know, I'm going to go from Ms. Lit, Mr. Lit, rather, has been here from the from the get go. And I'm going to call on people to see if they have any, rather than ask for hands and see if they have any, bring them over, see if they have any comments on the proposal. If not.
Okay.
Mr. Lit, you are now talking permitted. You are muted. As soon as you unmute, you can tell us whether or not you have some weigh in on the the zoning proposals.
He does not, according to the chat.
Yeah, I saw the chat. No microphone, no comment. All right. Ms. Hoker? And I'm going to give you the the same opportunity that I gave Mr. Lit. Any comments that you want to make as part of the forum?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. I'm going to skip over EDC, Marika, for no other reason than I'm going to come back to you as the same coming back to folks on the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Blashke from Historical.
Hi, thank you for I am. I'm very well. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. I know you're representing Historical, so an opportunity to weigh in if you'd like.
Indeed, indeed. I went through the documents and appreciate the comments everyone made, did not add additional feedback on the forum because I felt much it was covered. The things that I personally would emphasize are to make sure we're keeping in mind the walkable downtown. So sidewalks, to me, are essential. Some amount of green space definition, as earlier mentioned, would be very, very important. The minimal heights, maybe a lower height restriction, as also mentioned before, would keep the town, you know, more downtown section more historic, if you will, or at least in the in the in that intent. So those are the the areas that that come to mind personally. The other thing that that I'm not a fan of are a lot of multi unit dwellings that would take on apartments. I did see how it was written that multi use buildings could be a shop on the first floor and a few apartments on the second floor and so on, or offices and on the second floor and it's above that. As long as it doesn't get to the level of density, because the other thing I couldn't tell in the way it was described, and maybe I didn't read the percentages carefully enough, is what level of density could this result in? Could you wind up with buildings side by side in a more of a row house style or not? So I'd be be interested in some feedback on that. But I I would think that the the density is important. The green and walkable areas are important. And that the other aspect of, you know, even before, if it did go to a multi unit building, you know, would a permit for such a structure require a perk test or other, you know, septic clearance before doing so? As as I might understanding secondhand is that that's also very difficult to attain with our current lack of a sewer hookup. So really, the two areas, like you said, you're interested in is the max density, you know, building to building and whether or not there'd be some prerequisite before wishing to build a permit on a multi unit building related to proper septic.
All right, I'm going to put you on the spot just just very quickly. Mr. Weishen and I have been missing each other, trying to connect by email and phone. Just have has Historical had the opportunity to to consider this proposed article as a body yet? Or is that that in the offing?
We have not. We have not done that as yet and actually haven't scheduled it as yet. I think maybe from the vantage point that it's in good hands, but it hasn't come as a hasn't arisen as a need from our vantage point as yet.
All right, terrific. Well, thanks for your comments.
Any feedback on the questions?
Well, I don't think there is much disagreement with with what you said. The height thing is going to be interesting because I just know anecdotally that that Ms. Barrett had some particular reasons why she put the numbers in that she put. But but as as Ms. Brashio said, I don't want to, I don't want to to put any words in in her mouth. I I my sense is that what you described from both a walkability standpoint, I mean, you know, again, knock on wood, I I I hope most folks looking at what's happened between Sears Road and the the front door of South Row House in Pizza, South Row House of Pizza, that that is an incredibly incredible step forward for walkability in the downtown area. It sure feels that way to me when I walk it. And so that's very much. Again, I'm not, this is, this shows my ignorance in this area. I'm not sure how much of a zoning component the 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 walkability and the sidewalk issue is. By the same token, I know from initiatives that Ms. Gallagher is championing, championing and that the Board of Selectmen support that continuing what the Main Street project is has done, as I said, from Sears Road to to the the area in in the middle of downtown, that continuing that sidewalk effort is very much in the front of our minds. Fair enough?
I think we lost him, Marty.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Blashke. Ms. Cram has been with us for a long while and see if she give her the opportunity, see if she has any input. Hi, Ms. Cram, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, thanks. But I am actually, I was on to comment about something else unrelated to this, so you may want to come back to me at the end. I was going to jump in on the public comment section.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you, though.
We'll 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 be there sooner rather than later, I think. But we'll make sure that we get to you.
Thank you.
All right. And Claire, I'm going to get to you in a second. I'm I'm going through non EDC people first. Mr., I'm going to butcher your name. Physical, physical. I know, I believe you participated with us last time from Shop Seat, but an opportunity to weigh in again tonight if you choose.
Oh, sure. Am I, is my mic on?
It is.
Okay, great. Thank you, Martin. I I logged on a little late, so I'm not sure if you talked about the affordable housing portion of the bylaw before this. And if you have, I apologize for for missing the discussion. Obviously, from Shashi's standpoint, we want there to be an affordable housing component to this bylaw. And we, you know, my comments, at least, I'm not sure if I speak on behalf of shops entirely, but I had a couple of comments on the affordable housing section. One is that, you know, to the extent we're going to establish a threshold for the affordable housing requirement to kick in, meaning the number of, you know, eight or more units in a building. One comment was, should we make that project specific rather than building specific? Because I suppose if a developer came in and did four duplexes, it'd be four separate buildings of less than eight units. And they could circumvent the affordable housing component that that is intended. And I think that's consistent with forty B and forty R, that they're all project based, not not building based. So that's one sort of technical comment. Two, I don't, I know that there's been some discussions on adjusting that twelve and a half percent requirement to something higher. I'm not sure if that's been discussed. We'd obviously like it to be higher. I think forty B and forty are both requiring those in those projects a twenty percent minimum affordability requirement. I can see if there's a project with only eight units and, you know, if you required twenty percent, that requires two units, that might actually be twenty five units. But I'm sorry, twenty five percent. So I guess we, but I mean, if there's only eight units, maybe only only twelve and a half applies there. But if there's more than eight units, you know, our thought is it should it should go up to something higher than twelve and a half percent to either twenty or twenty five. And and then I guess my third point, and I won't keep you all night, is that, you know, I I don't know if anyone's considered establishing density bonuses to developers who, you know, who are willing to to include a higher percentage of affordability. And I the comments I'm hearing is that no one really wants density, but we do need more housing in Southboro in general in this area, where I think it will support the project. So I I guess we'd ask the the board to consider some density incentive bonuses to people who are willing to do higher affordability. That's it. Those are my comments.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Ms. Reynolds texted me and said she's fine, just observing. Marika, we've had input from the EDC, and I believe you submitted written. I'll give you the opportunity if you have any additional comments to weigh in.
Sorry, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And the last person in our, before I get to the other members of the Board of Selectmen, is Ms. De Maria, who I believe may be here for another issue as well, but maybe this one. Ms. De Maria, how are you?
Marty, she's on ZBA, just so you're aware. She's a member.
Hi.
Good evening. How are you?
Very good, thank you. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Yep, no, I'm just listening and I have no comments right now.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
All right. I have gone through everyone, and now I'm going to turn to you, Mr. Shea, with the opportunity to have reviewed the materials and listening tonight. Do you have any additional comments that you want?
No additional comments. Looking forward to the discussion once Judy can be here and hopefully we can, you know, really target in on if there are particular sections that a number of people have commented on. Looking forward to a discussion on that so we can continue to come to consensus on this. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Brian. And Mr. Stivers?
That makes me last and least, as I understand it.
That was not my intent.
Couple of comments. I think this is a challenging problem, as a matter of fact. A lot of things that many of us want to see happen in downtown. It's not a lot of space. We don't have a lot of money to invest in it, so we've got to find a way to make it attractive for people to invest. And so it seems to me that trying to balance the the housing issues, which are very desirable in terms of affordability, open space, business investment downtown, et cetera. All these things going together, I think, are a difficult problem to solve. And I guess I would ask Lisa and Julie, as you work with Judy on the next round. She, I know, sees a lot of towns and has over the last twenty plus years in terms of her practice. Are there things that we can draw on experience with other towns to solve some of these issues? How do we, again, motivate people to invest? Is it density bonuses? Are there other incentives that we can provide to be able to lure capital in to make some of the things happen that we want to happen in this area? And how do we balance the housing issues in terms of requiring too much affordable housing so people don't want to spend money to build housing downtown versus, you know, not getting the housing that we need? So again, I think Judy could be very helpful to suggest solutions to this. And it seems to me it would be helpful to sort of point her in this direction to say, give us input on the on the bylaw, that at a concept level, how do we make these pieces work? How do others solve these problems? We want to think about in terms of achieving or in some ways conflicting goals in this process. So I would try to get her to, again, be on point to be proactive and suggest things versus reacting to all of our collective comments, which together, the answer may be, you can't have all the things that everybody wants. So we've got a new bylaw, but we don't get the behavior that we need. So again, I'd ask her that and ask her to make some comments on that next time we talk with her.
I think my plan is to, you know, I'm sure Lisa and I will be in touch with her at some point before next meeting to serve to convey some of the, I've been taking notes here and convey some of the additional feedback. And I've read through, I think, almost all, if not all, of the comments that everyone submitted so far. And I think you you hit an important point, and it was one that Judy actually raised to us that in some ways, you know, that we want, we 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 want mixed use and that's a big piece of this. And we want affordable housing, but we're also very, very limited on space. So we're, I think it's important that we keep talking about this, but there are only unless we're going to expand the boundaries of what we consider to be the downtown business village district, then there we're really not talking about a lot of places that we could have, you know, more than a couple, you know, maybe four units of housing. You know, especially if we don't want to give up or be high. Temperature in this room seems that we don't, and that's okay by me, too. So, you know, you're right, it's balancing these these needs, which all should work together, but are going to sort of literally compete for space in the discussion, so.
Yeah. Again, I think that that I think that'd be very helpful if she came back to us and said, I understand what everybody wants. To get what you want, you got to go up, you got to go out, or you got to have a sewer system, or what do you need to do to make these things happen? To give us something to then sink our teeth into to see if we're willing to do what we need to do to make it work? Or if we want to give up on some of the things that we want, to be able to fit within the space that or the parameters that we're willing to have with. So I just I'm having trouble myself bounding this problem and seeing, you know, how the dimensions work with one another and what you can have, what you can't have. and what you can have, what you can't have, what it costs you to get flexibility in certain areas.
All right, thanks, everybody. Our plan from the Board of Selectmen perspective then is to schedule again for November.
I have a question about, several people raised sidewalks.
All right, where, I don't, where is that coming from?
Julie.
Oh, Julie, I'm sorry, you're frozen, so I can't tell that it's you speaking. I'm sorry.
I think, I don't know if my internet's off or something, it sounds like maybe there's a delay. So I had a question, but I'm only going to ask if people can hear me okay, if I'm not messing up the sound.
Speak slowly, and we can probably hear you. You are broken up a little bit.
Can you hear me okay or no?
Fine.
Okay. I just had a question. A few people raised the issue of sidewalks. And that wasn't specifically brought up in the zoning bylaw, although, you know, that we did talk about walkability and pedestrian access. Is that something, and I'm kind of asking the people who participated in ZAC the last time around, is that something that is, would typically be in a zoning bylaw? Or would that be something that's sort of separate? I know sidewalks has been an issue in our town for a long time, and we're fortunate that we're solving some of the downtown sidewalk issues now. But, you know, that was a point that a lot of people brought up, so I wanted to see if anyone had further thoughts on it.
I don't think that was in the ZAC process. I don't remember the focus on sidewalks particularly. I think often that comes through the site plan, planning board requirements in terms of the development, residential development, the planning board, I think, can require sidewalks, but I could stand corrected, the planning boards here, Don, not correct.
Sidewalks is a separate, there's a, there's a section in the code that I don't have in front of me that's called sidewalks. But if it's an existing way, it's my understanding that the selectmen have jurisdiction over existing ways, which includes the pavement for the vehicles and possibly sidewalks on an existing way, which is what Main Street is. If I remember right, it wasn't that long ago, and Sam, you'll probably remember when we were doing the ZAC, that one of the highest priorities in town was to have a sidewalk between Central Street and Fayetteville and across the causeway to the main part, to the rest of the town.
The current zoning bylaw doesn't actually have a lot of language about sidewalks. Then it talks about it relative to where signs are placed, all of its sidewalks, but I don't quickly see anything that talks about sidewalks.
Yeah, I think that's a, I'm going to be surprised, quite frankly, if it, if it is typically a, an item in a zoning bylaw. I guess I could be surprised. But by the same token, at least in the, primarily in the downtown area, that is, half of it, again, half of the downtown area has already been addressed with sidewalks. And the rest of it is, is, is very much in the planning stages. I know somebody mentioned CSX, and that's one of the issues that needs to be resolved. But the extension of sidewalks, as well as paving, from where the Main Street project currently stops through at least the beginning of East Main Street, is, again, it's already on the planning board. Small p, small b.
Marty, before we move on, if I
Yeah, Lisa.
Comment, I guess I'm the only one that didn't get to. So just from a process standpoint, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments. We did receive a lot of them. Where we're leaving the door open for comments, if anyone's listening, and if we could also put out that we received comments through the 18th, that would be great. That would give Judy time to process them. Also, she has sent some initial comments in, comments and answers to some of the questions. We'll review those. She's going to finish up with them sometime tomorrow, so we'll get them out to everybody, which may also, you know, help the discussion in moving forward for the 24th. It may, you know, make some of the discussions a little less potentially. So we will get those out to everybody as soon as we review them. And again, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I know it's tough. We all have a lot of meetings. And, you know, on behalf of the board, we do appreciate everybody trying to move this forward. So, thank you.
Yep, and I'm going to shut up in a minute just to say, I encourage everybody to read through the comments. They were very helpful for me. Again, maybe I'm, I'm not even going to say maybe. I'm an optimist about this. I don't think there is, there, I didn't, I didn't see very much in the comments that seemed intractable. And so I'm hopeful with, again, a spirit of getting this done, that on the 24th, we move the, the ball even farther along and get to a proposed zoning article that, that accomplishes what all of us, I think, want to get accomplished in downtown, which is, which is to increase its vibrancy but maintain its intimacy. And hopefully, we can put together a zoning article that accomplishes those things. All right, folks, the Board of Selectmen is going to move on to the rest of our business now. I thank you all very much, and those of you who are able, I look forward to seeing you on November 24th. So take care, folks.
Mr. Chairman, we need to take a vote to adjourn. We actually had a quorum. First up, one quick thing, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board, thank you so much for having this meeting and everybody involved. And I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to read through the document, send in their comments. It's awesome. I don't think we're all that far off, like Mr. Healy said. And I just want to thank everyone for their time on doing this. It's going to be amazing if we can pull this off and get everything done. So if it's okay if I just have somebody make in a motion to adjourn from my committee? Anybody?
They don't want to leave.
I know, right?
I'll make a motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second, Mr. Morehead. Roll call. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Duka?
Yes.
Mr. Morehead?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson? Don't hear him, and myself. I thank you guys very much. I appreciate everything.
All right, good night, EDC.
Thank you.
Marty, I think we did wind up, since I logged on late, but I think we did have a quorum. So I'll do the same thing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Did you make the motion, Marty?
Oh, motion made. To adjourn our board meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, Morris, yes?
Oh, yeah.
Blue hand, yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks a lot, Marty.
All right, Don. Good night. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
It's actually a really good meeting, you know that?
John, I can still hear you.
You sound surprised, John.
Vanessa, tell me when we are reconfigured to back to our meeting.
They're all set.
Okay. All right, any other way in on either the, what we just finished with our forum or the scheduling for November 24th? Okay. Lisa, from our perspective, what is, what, what do you think comes next along these lines? You, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead. Ask, ask the question, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, it seemed like you said that, that you and Julie Connolly will be back to Judy Barrett. Thank her for, I know she, she had issues with a lot of dates in November, so thank her for making herself, herself available on the 24th. That's appreciated. What, what, what is your understanding of the process now? We've got some comments, and we had some preliminary reply from her. Are you going to give her a deadline to come up? I think John Wood's suggestion was a very good one, to, to get something revised from her, responding to the, to the comments and incorporating them with enough lead time for the 24th, so that the, the conversation on the 24th is as robust and helpful as possible.
So Judy, at seven o'clock tonight, sent over a bunch of comments and answers to some of the questions that were asked from the document. She's going to get to the rest of the comments tomorrow. So once we look through them quickly, hopefully, we can get them to all the boards and committees tomorrow. I think, Marty, that, and again, I can't speak for Judy, but I would imagine, based on some of the questions and the feedback she gave us initially, there's a lot of policy questions. So for her to actually craft this into a document when there are certain things that need to be hashed out and policies decided, I personally think is a little premature. I think, though, that she can put us in a really good spot. And when she has all the questions, and maybe when she's answered some of the questions, it might be a little easier task. I will certainly ask that question of her tomorrow. I certainly don't want to speak for her. But just from the conversations we've had, yeah, so, and then the process moving forward is, again, hopefully, we get the comments out to everybody. And I thought, I think that's going to alleviate some of the issues that may be there. That is my hope. And again, I haven't had the opportunity to read through them either, so. Does that answer your question?
It does. It just, it just strikes me that, that where we want to get with all of this is to eliminate issues. And, you know, almost, almost, you know, like, I'm not a big fan of whiteboards, but, but almost, you know, have, have the equivalent of a, of a, of a whiteboard with the, with the eight, 12, you know, 17, whatever the number is of issues that have been raised by people, and march through and see if they've been adequately addressed, you know, addressed and knock them off. And I suspect there are going to be some issues at the end of the day. I'm not sure what they are. There are issues at the end of the day where you're absolutely right. They are, they are less technical questions than they are policy questions. But to the extent we can whittle that down, so we know, you know, what the, you know, three or five critical policy questions are that have to be resolved. And then I think, Sam, your point is probably a good one, that, that there's, there's, you know, necessary sort of intersection with, okay, this is what you want to do from a policy perspective. What does that mean in terms of the language that goes into the zoning bylaw? And, but again, it just strikes me that, that it can be a little bit overwhelming, just looking at the comments, that, 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 again, individually incredibly helpful, but when you look at the entire body of them, that, oh my goodness, how are we going to get our arms around this? Well, I think the way we get our arms around it is to tick them off, and this is one we've addressed. This is one we have addressed. So the more that Judy Barrett, or with Judy Barrett's help, we can accomplish that on the 24th, I think that's the real progress that we can make. At least, that's my view.
No, I completely agree, Marty, and that was kind of, I think, the intent was, in order for her to move forward, there's certain things she needs clarity on. And I think having us all together will do that. And honestly, in looking at the document and some of the comments, I agree with you. I think it comes down to the standards, you know? I think the definitions are important, but I think they're minor in nature, you know? And as you go through certain sections, and one other thing I'll say about the matrix that was sent was, these were only the sections that people had comments on. There was large portions of the document that nobody commented on. So I think to keep that in mind, when, when we look at this document, it's a little overwhelming that there are so many comments, but there were just as many items not commented on. So I think we're further ahead than we potentially think we may be. So I'm optimistic.
Okay. Anything else from any other members? Okay, I think we are ready for us now to move off of the downtown initiative discussion and get back to our, our agenda. And knowing that we've got a public comment, you know, what, how do people feel about jumping ahead on the public comment? We've had people waiting for a while. Ms. Cram is still there. And see if they're, get, get rid of, move public comment up ahead of reports at this point. I don't see disagreement, so I'm going to do that. So we are going to lift public comment from item seven ahead of item five reports. And Ms. Cram, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm receipt of a letter that my neighbors and I sent jointly. I believe my neighbor hand-delivered it, not last Friday, but the week before, to Town Hall. The letter was to the Board of Selectmen and copying the Conservation Commission, and I believe the Planning Board, if I remember correctly. And it's regarding a proposed trail in the Bigelow Wildlife Refuge, which is located on Bigelow Road in Southborough. We had been on probably, maybe three weeks ago, briefly, just to bring this to your attention. So we followed up with the letter, and we just wanted to make sure that you received it. And we also wanted to discuss what are the next steps. And then I think my neighbor also said she dropped off a petition on Monday, and I don't know if you've received copies of that either.
Just personally, I'm familiar with the letter. I have not seen a petition, Mark.
No, I haven't. I haven't seen a petition either.
Okay, I'll have to follow up with her.
Okay. Ms. Cram, this is, this is my understanding of the, the letter and the, the issue that was raised in the letter. And that is that currently, the issue, the issue is before the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Okay, and that, we are, we are mindful of not stepping on jurisdictional toes. So, you know, if and when the Conservation Commission makes a determination, then there may be a basis for the Board of Selectmen weighing in. But I do not believe there is right now. If other members disagree with me, let me know. But I believe that is the status right now. We have to, we are letting the, the process play itself out before the Conservation Commission, before we determine whether or not it's appropriate for us to get involved. And I see nodding by other members of the Board of Selectmen. So do you have a, let me, let me ask you, do you have a sense of what the timing is with the Conservation Commission at this point?
I believe we are on the agenda for the next meeting on Thursday evening. I think it's been dragged out for a while. I think they may possibly vote on it Thursday, although I'm not 100% sure. One of the members of the Conservation Commission indicated that they may postpone it or continue it to another meeting until they found out your opinion on it, but it sounds like they need to make their decision first.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we've, we've not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, we've not been asked by the Conservation Commission to weigh in on this issue, have we?
No, I've seen nothing from Ms. Danza seeking that.
Okay, all right, Lisa, I'm sorry.
No, just, if I could ask Ms. Cram just a question. Has the, have the neighbors had an opportunity to have a, a discussion with Solf? I know, you know, the land was, is under the control of Solf at this point. Has there been any outside discussions with Solf by the neighbors?
Not to my knowledge. Maybe that might be something that we should try to get everyone together who signed the petition and maybe just have a conversation with them.
Okay, thank you. It was just, I just was, was curious as where they have control of the land that was, you know, that was donated. And, you know, I'm not sure, maybe through the ConCon meetings, they're aware of the concerns that the neighbors have, and maybe they're not. So again, it never hurts to have a discussion.
That makes sense. Thank you for the suggestion. I think.
And Ms. Cram, let me, let me just interrupt you for one quick second. The other thing is, Mr. Purple, if you could check with conservation and to make sure that, that, that our understanding, as we sit here tonight, is correct, and that is that, that, that conservation isn't sitting, waiting for something from us before making a determination, because if they are, then if it's appropriate, we can weigh in. But as I said, I, Ms. Cram, I'm not aware of any, any request or questions posed to us by the Conservation Commission about the determination that they need to make.
Marty, this is on their agenda for Thursday night.
On their agenda?
Your agenda.
Yeah, okay. All right, and Ms. Cram, I interrupted you.
I honestly forget what I was saying, but that all makes plenty of sense. I think maybe we'll just wait and see what happens on the meeting Thursday evening, and then bring it back to you if they make a decision.
Okay, fair enough. Well, thank you for weighing in on public comment.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you as well.
And Ms. Houlihan has her hand up.
Hi.
Hello again, Marty.
Marty Houlihan, speaking as an elected official, rep, from the Planning Board. I had sent a communication to the Board of Selectmen on Monday, the 2nd of November, informing you of two conflicting opinions regarding 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination Bylaw. There's two circulating interpretations, one from the Building Commission and one from Town Council. Since they are both reports of the Board of Selectmen, I'm seeking your, your help to come to a decision as to who has the right interpretation as it is impacting a current citizen's request for action. So I just wanted to make sure, one, that you've received that communication. It did, it was supplemented with both circulating opinions. And I, and I just wanted to make sure you had that and that it was on an active list of you to tackle.
Thank you. Yes, received. And yes, active issue. And I'll address, it's something, actually, I was going to talk about in my chair report tonight, and, and was going to refer to conversations that Mr. Purple had as well with the Building Inspector. The, the, the procedural posture is that the Building Inspector, within her jurisdiction, has made a determination. That determination is not appealable to the Board of Selectmen. It's appealable if someone chooses to do so to the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Purple, you're, you touched base with Ms. Lavoli, who affirmed her interpretation that the, of the, the lighting bylaw, and affirmed the determination she made pursuant to that bylaw. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it is, in some respects, it's, it's, it's of similar ilk as, as the, the discussion with Ms. Cram. The, the procedure is being followed, and that is for the Building Inspector to make a determination. She's, and properly within her legal authority, she's made that determination. I took a look at both of the, both her determination before Mr. Purple touched base with her, as well as the, the letter that Mr. Cipriano sent to the Planning Board Chair in, I guess it was February of 2019. And they are, they are, they are difficult to reconcile. That being said, the, the jurisdiction for making this determination falls with the Building Inspector. And the appellate route is to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as part of my report, I was going to see if there's a stomach by the members of the Board of Selectmen to try to inject ourselves into that process, or to let that process play itself out.
Okay, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. It's unfortunate, because I do think they're both kind of direct reports. The Board of Selectmen and Town Council was paid for that professional opinion. So I can understand the appeal route. My request, then, would still be to waive the fee, because I don't think a citizen should have to pay for two conflicting reports coming from one town government.
My reaction is that, 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 again, that, that I am not inclined to inject myself as a member of the Board of Selectmen into a process that's already been set up. I, I, I get, I, I certainly get the point you're making. I understand the, the two, the correspondence and the opinion by Ms. Lavoli. I'm not going to, by, by deciding to, to waive a, a, an appellate fee or otherwise, weigh in on what I think the merits of either of those positions are. But we've got a structure in place, and that, that, the structure and the procedure pursuant to it is being followed. And I'm not inclined to inject myself, or to, to move the, the Board of Selectmen, inject themselves, and to alter that process. That's my view.
You, Marty, and board, I appreciate it. I do, will say, like, moving forward with our outdoor lighting illumination bylaw, should we ever have another town meeting, and it comes on meeting floor, this is an issue, and one that you, the Board of Selectmen weighed in on not to have a heavy hand around enforcement. So herein lies a concern, and I'll just put it out there. I think it, it'll come back to the Planning Board. We'll come back with some verbiage to, to reinstate. But I think this is, it's, it's just, it's concerning for me, both as a private citizen and as an elected official. But I appreciate your candor, and I will, you know, I will advise that individual to put an appeal in place.
Yeah, and, 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 Marty, just following up on that, because I'm one of the people who, who specifically raised the enforcement issue. Not surprisingly, the first thing I did in terms of the, the applicable zoning article here was to look at enforcement. And one of my points with the previous article was not to have a heavy hand with enforcement, but to have very clear lines with enforcement. Honestly, one of the things with this previous zoning article is that it doesn't have that. And nor is there, is the, the, the subject language here particularly good in terms of, I mean, Mr. Cipriano's opinion was that, that referenced the goals of the bylaw that talked about illumination extending into, into public roadways. Basically, that was the hook. And obviously, from the Building Inspector's interpretation, there's disagreement on whether or not that hook is sufficient to implicate the other provisions of the zoning. Honestly, both views are completely reasonable. But the process that's set up is, is that, is that the determination of, of which one of those views is applicable lies with the Building Inspector. And the Building Inspector made her determination, and it's, at the end of the day, someone can disagree with it, but it's certainly not an unreasonable determination, which is why I think the appropriate way forward here, looking at it from a member of the Board of Selectmen, is to let the process play itself out, rather than we, the board, injecting ourselves into that existing process.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we will go back pen to paper to kind of make a little bit more clarity in that, because I agree with you. I think it's ambiguous. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you hearing me out.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
I think that may be it for public comment. I don't see any other hands raised.
Can we, can we go back to that for just one second? So, I don't know how anybody else feels about the fee. And is that something, maybe this needs to be an agenda item to discuss, waiving of the fee? I'd, I'd like to have that discussion, how and when you'd like to do it. I mean, obviously, that's up to you.
We can, I mean, I, I'm fine putting it on for the next meeting. As I said, I was, I was planning to bring the issue up, the fact that we'd received the correspondence as part of my chair's report, and see if there was an appetite for having a broader discussion about it. So if there is, that's fine. We can put it on for the 17th.
Okay, no, that's fine. And it isn't, it isn't a process question. Just, just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not asking to, you know, to, to talk about the process, like you, you said, tonight. I, I believe the process is in place. And I specifically like to just talk about the fee. That's all.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on those issues before I zip through my chair's report? Yep.
Let me make one quick comment. I'm very sympathetic to Ms. Houlihan. As a zoning board member many years ago, I actually struggled with this one. We had some cases that hinged on this. And I think it would be very helpful if Planning Board, we could work with the Planning Board to provide clarity around this issue, because this is something that has kind of come up at least several times in the past. So it'd be great if we could actually fix this issue going forward.
Yeah, here's, I, I, I don't disagree with you. And, and, and the, the biggest problem with the existing bylaw is, and I, I mentioned it, is that the, the, the language, again, that the legal opinion ties to, is in the goals section. It's not in the requirements section. And it is difficult to, and I, I suspect this is the interpretation by the, or at least part of the interpretation by the Building Inspector, it's, it is difficult to, to, to sort of transmit general language about what the goals are of a bylaw, of a law, of a regulation, whatever, into these are requirements. And so bringing clarity to that, I think, makes an awful lot of sense. But I, as I said, I also understand how Billy Inspector, charged with the responsibility for interpreting the law and enforcing the law, could wrestle with that and come out where she did.
Yep. And I've seen different Building Inspectors having different opinions at that same point. So anything we can do-
I'm not surprised.
Anything we can do to be helpful or move in the right direction, that I think would be very useful. Thanks.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move on to the other items in my report. My, my wife heavily chastised me, because at the, in my last report, I talked about Mr. Haggerty's terrific effort and, and generally, the terrific effort on Election Day. And she made the very good point, and so I'm going to make the very good point, that, you know, in a, not in a weird way, but maybe in an, in a, in an unappreciated way, those poll workers on Election Day were almost like first responders. I mean, it was, you know, we, we, we had to have an election. It was important to have an election. And in order to do that, we needed people who were willing to sit in the trotty or gymnasium for the balance of a day, and, you know, put up with the traffic that, 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 you know, brings all sorts of, of controls, but nonetheless risks during this, this crazy COVID time that we find ourselves in. So I am going out of my way tonight to specifically thank the poll workers who were willing to make sure our election in the town of South Row was possible on last Tuesday, November 3rd. And Mark, maybe you and I can think of a way to, you know, whether it's letters from the Board of Selectmen, or something that, that is a real acknowledgement of, of the fact that that happened.
Yeah, I, I think one other thing, too, just to specific, you know, you hate to single people out to, you know, you tend to forget people. But, but the Assistant Town Clerk, Amy Berry, that was her first, you know, first big election, and you couldn't have it any bigger. And I think that, you know, obviously, Jim worked to put a great plan in place, but I think she did a great job executing that plan. And, you know, no issues, no anything. Saw her a couple of times during the day, calm, cool, collected. Everything worked great. So kudos to her and, and also the, the poll workers. And again, you know, Jim, for putting the plan in place. But, but Amy, you know, for, for carrying that plan out on Election Day.
Next thing, you may have seen the notice, and, and we checked back in the records for South Row designating somebody for the MWR TA Board. I don't know if there's anyone on the Board of Selectmen who is interested in doing that. If there is, let me know. I'm not entirely sure what they do. But I'm sure it's important. Ms. Bartolini, I guess, for many years, was the, the representative of the town of South Row. And if someone from the Board is not interested in being our designate for that, then I'll reach out to some other boards that, that might fall into, into the, sort of, the, the general area. EDC apparently has been one in the past. And whether or not there's someone on the EDC, for instance, who might be interested in being our designate. So let me know. If, if, if I don't hear from somebody the next day or so, I'll, I'll reach out a little bit broader than that. Similar with state stuff, and I know that there's, there's postings with, with Twitter and otherwise, but, but for, for folks who are watching and are interested in what may or may not be happening with our commuter rail and scheduling in, the, the Commonwealth is, and the MBTA are scheduling public forums, so the opportunity to weigh in. Things that are on the chopping block, block, apparently, that would impact us are weekend service, as well as, as I think curtailing all service after 9:00 PM. I think the, the commuting hours would pretty much remain intact, even as we emerge from COVID-19, hopefully sooner rather than later. But for those who are interested, keep tabs with the, the South Row website. Let's see. Two that are somewhat related, and, and I'm not quite sure, there, there was, there was an issue, and, and there was a letter you received that, that, that tangentially related to it. But there was an issue related to, to the 45 Highland Street property. And one of the things that slipped through the cracks about that is because there was some, some email traffic that did, by some town committee members that did not use town email. And that created problems because the email did not go through the way it normally would. And I'm, I'm betwixt and between about the way to, to sort of address that with people, to use town email on town business. I mean, Tom O'Flamie sent out a couple of reminders. But it isn't just, it'd be better if you use town email. There are consequences if you don't, because Gmail and, and, and other uses don't necessarily go through. So not necessarily tonight, although if somebody wants to weigh in tonight, I'm happy to hear it. But again, it's frustrating when that happens. So if you have any ideas, let me know. Again, it doesn't have to be tonight, but let me know down the line about some additional things that we might do to, to increase the use of town email for town business. And then the final thing relating to 45 Highland, we'll have an executive session item on it next week. And I think, Mark, that a, that a folder is being set up, the way we've set up folders for various litigation and the like, this falls into the category of, of at least potential litigation. And is that, is that folder set up, or is it going, going to be set up?
Yes, no, that, that folder is all set up. And so I know that I've heard from a couple of you that there's been some issues with accessing that. Has everyone, with the possible exception of Ms. Braccio, been able to, been able to access that shared folder?
Okay. Okay, let's get that resolved. I mean-
General assent, yeah. I, like I said, I, I've, you know, I think Ms. Braccio's, you know, having some, some issues that I know that Ms. O'Flamie is working with her directly on, so.
Yeah, and if I'll just add that, that he did reach out to me. He wanted to, to talk today, but unfortunately, it just didn't happen. So it's, it's, it's not on Tom that it's not fixed. So he made the effort.
And the, the, the final thing, and I don't want to tiptoe too close to executive session, but, but a letter was sent to members of the, of the Board of Selectmen, and I'll just let you know that, that my response was, I do not respond to self-serving correspondence with self-serving correspondence of my own. And so in terms of 45 Highland Street, to be continued. And that's my chair's report. Members' report. Ms. Braccio?
Hi, thank you. Just one thing. I just wanted to reiterate once again that the, the rent and mortgage program is live. If there's anybody that's watching that may need some assistance, please go to the town website on the COVID page. It gives you all the information you need. We have had a couple of applications come in, which is a definite plus. And we've had a great opportunity to potentially be able to help someone. So, thank you.
Ms. Melonowski?
Thank you. I just had one update. I did watch the South Row School Committee meeting last night, and they, as part of their financial update, did say that they were looking to use $100,000 out of the CARES funds for testing for COVID. So I just wanted this board to be aware that they're looking for that. And I don't know, Mr. Purple, if you have anything else to add on that. But I know Brian and Carla are coming in next week, and I'm sure we'll see that as part of their report.
Yeah, they are. And the only other thing that I will add is I know that they do have, they're looking to, to use a certain amount of, of the CARES Act money as well for purchasing of some additional Chromebooks. And I know that, I believe that Carla will have some additional detail on that for next week.
Mr. Shea?
Very much looking forward to participating with the veterans tomorrow for the Veterans Day Observance. And I can offer up a brief report at our next meeting on how that went.
The, I don't know if it's the Scouts or, or who have been doing a, a very nice job, sort of, of attending to that, to that area. It looks a lot better than it did even three or four days ago.
You know, I even took a walk through there on Saturday as well. You know, I even took a walk through there on Saturday as well and, in preparation and, um, very, very grateful as well that the Main Street project has advanced to the stage that it has to, to lend a nice background for the, for the observance also.
I know, and, and I was, I was a little late with my, uh, with, with my tree report last week since they're, they've all been planted, um, in the last five days. So, and they look great, and they look great, and they look great.
Maybe we can have a nice conversation someday in the future underneath the tree along the, uh, Marty Healy sidewalk between the Community House and Woodward School.
How many times, how many times do I have to say that you were right about that? I've acknowledged it. I've acknowledged it on video, on tape.
Just a self, self-serving comment to follow up on the.
All right.
I'm just teasing.
I understand.
If I may, I just want to thank Brian for representing the Board, uh, for the ceremony and the dedication to John Wilson's French tomorrow. So thank you.
Mr. Stivers?
Just quickly, uh, follow up a comment I'd made previously. I continue to have exploratory conversation with the Board of Health on the trash hauler licensing. And, um, I think we're making some progress on that, but number of things to follow up on there. That's it.
Okay, and one final thing for me. I sent around all of, or Mark sent around the, um, uh, liaison, and I've heard a little bit of feedback. I'll try to jigger those in the, um, maybe in the next day, not very much. But mainly having to do with, with, uh, with Shopsey and, uh, Chelsea, I went back and forth about whether or not it made sense for you to be liaison since you were on Shopsey, but I've been convinced that it probably does make sense to let you wear both of those hats at the same time. So I'll, I'll switch, um, one assignment with that. Um, I think that maybe that's the only one. But I'll let you know in the next, uh, day or so. Okay? And hopefully otherwise, though I haven't heard, I haven't, I haven't heard outrage, so I'm assuming everybody's at least okay with the, uh, with the first wave of assignments. Okay, I think, oh, Mr. Purple, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very quickly, um, so as you may have noticed, the temporary flagpole has been set. Uh, American flag is raised. Um, it, it, it looks great. And, um, was done just in, just in the nick of time for Veterans Day. Um, and, uh, at the Chair's direction, um, that does prevent at least one tree from being planted. Because that was where they intended to put one tree. Um, and, uh, and I do want to thank Karen Galligan for helping, helping navigate that issue at the last minute. But, um, but obviously, um, I think that's only a temporary, um, uh, prevention because obviously when the temporary flagpole is removed, I believe that a tree is, is slated to, uh, to go there and is all set for that. Um, the only other item that I have is, um, just to let the Board know, obviously, with, with, uh, Tom Flames, uh, O'Flambeau's resignation, I've been having, um, um, a preliminary discussion with the school, uh, about seeing whether or not, you know, um, it makes sense for us to consolidate, um, some of our services in, in, um, in the way that we manage our IT. And, um, I'll be having hopefully a more robust discussion with the school on Thursday, uh, about that. We've had these conversations in the past since I've been here. We've had them on IT. We've had them on facilities. Uh, I don't think that anyone ever disagrees that, you know, there may be a great economy of scale in doing that, but the timing hasn't worked. But again, um, you know, we need to ask the question, uh, just to see if there is a possibility. We do have the position advertised solely as a townside position at this point, so we want to make sure that we don't lose any time, you know, should those discussions not bear fruit. But I will keep the Board informed as we move forward in those discussions.
All right, I am going to move off reports to, since we've already covered public comment, our last, um, item consent agenda for the night. And this is always, I should, I should do a betting pool on how many consent, consent agenda items are going to get held. So, um, are there any consent agenda items to be held? Just A? Okay, so I will move that we, uh, approve, um, consent agenda items B or, yeah, I guess not items, B, C, and D.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Stivers. Discussion done. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Item A, open session minutes. Ms. Malinowski?
So I just had one change. Um, on page two, row three, um, it should be Mr. Malinowski and not Ms. Malinowski. I just want to be clear on who said. I know it's one letter, but it, but I don't know a lot about. You're on mute.
So on mute.
Marty, you're on mute.
I didn't say anything interesting. So with that, with that correction, I will move to approve consent agenda item A.
Second.
Uh, I'm not sure who seconded. I'll give it to Mr. Sti, Mr. Stivers. Discussion done. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye.
I moved to adjourn.
Mr. Shea moves to adjourn.
Welcome.
Seconded by Mr. Stivers. Discussion done. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Uh, it's going to be a beautiful Veterans Day, everybody. Um, enjoy. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
World record. I don't think we've ever gotten done this early.
I know. Head for the hills. Bye-bye.